We have an agenda review session. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicle traffic, Chapter 10, 20, Handicap Parking, Section 10, 20, 10, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicap persons at 376 Livingston Avenue, 46A Chester Circle. Number two, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicle traffic, Chapter 10, 1240, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10, 1240, Schedule 6, stop intersections, delete intersection of Roosevelt Street and Henry Street, stop sign on Roosevelt Street, and add intersection of Roosevelt Street and Henry Street, stop sign on Henry Street. Number three, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 15, Buildings in Construction, Regarding to Construction Code Fees. We have ordinances on first reading. Number one, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 5, Business License and Regulation, Chapter 5.80, Rent Control. Two, bond ordinance providing for the 2019 General Capital Improvement Program by and in the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $4,885,276, therefore authorizing a debt in the amount of $4,651,000 and requiring a down payment of $234,276. Number three, bond ordinance providing for the various improvements to the water system by the city by and in the City of New Brunswick in the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $6,192,755, therefore authorizing the issuance of $6,192,755 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Number four, bond order providing for the various capital improvements for the sewer system by and in the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $2,762,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $2,762,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Five, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12, 28, Parks and Playgrounds, at Welcome Street Park. We have resolutions. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, 7/6/19, 7/19/19, and B, 7/20/19 to 8/2 of 19. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize payment for redemption of school bonds in the amount of $5,725 to Jack Alphurus. Five, authorize renewal of agreement with the County of Middlesex for basic life support program for 2019 amounts received, $53,000. Number six, approve request for street closing, requested by UGEO City Church Incorporated. Location Tabernacle Way between George Street and Nielsen Street for religious fare for the community, date Saturday, August 10th, 2019, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., police extra duty. Seven, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers University Office of Emergency Management. Rutgers University of Move-In Days honors college students, Wednesday, August 28, 2019. One-way on Seminary Place from College Avenue to George Street, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Rutgers University of Move-In Days, college avenue students. Thursday, August 29, 2019, one-way on College Avenue between Huntington Street and Fisher Place, heading south on College Avenue towards Hamilton Street, 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Police extra duty. Number eight, approve request for the use of city property, requested by Respect for Life Incorporated, Mohammed Masu, location Peaster Park and Basketball Courts, New Brunswick Yearning Day Festival and Community Gathering, Saturday, August 31st, 2019, Rain Day, Sunday, September 1st, 2019, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Number nine, approve request for use of city property, requested by the Great American Volleyball. Location Duble Park, the outfield area, behind field 2, 4, and 5, for grass volleyball tournaments, date Saturday, August 10th, 2019, and Sunday, August 11th, 2019, Saturday, September 21st, and Sunday, September 22nd, 2019, Saturday, October 12th, and October 13th, 2019, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number 10, approve renewal of liquor license with special ruling for rubbish and dirt. An inactive life parole for liquor license, 121433033004, 2019 to 2020. Number 11, approve request for street closing, requested by the State Theater, Livingston Avenue, the End of Helbert Hotel, the George Street, Annual Family Day, Sunday, September 22nd, 2019, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Police extra duty. 12, approve resolution to request public referendum question on the November 5th, 2019 election ballot in regards to create open space trust fund. 13, authorize professional service agreement with Gibson and Durnier, LLC, for intellectual property matters not to exceed $7,500. 14, approve request for use of city property, requested by Uptown Crime Watch for National Night Out, Recreation Park, Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, 4:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Non-pro-tun. 15, approve request for use of city property, requested by the Professional Latino Firefighters of New Jersey, Joyce Kilmer Park, National Night Out, Tuesday, August 6th, 4:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 16, approve off-premise rapid 50-50, New Brunswick Elks Lodge, 324, 40 Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey, New Brunswick Elks Lodge, 324, Saturday, December 14th, 2019. 17, approve on-premise rapid 50-50 at the Helbert Hotel, 10 Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick, to the Rutgers University Foundation, Saturday, October 26th, 2019. 18, approve award of contract with Gold Site Business Machine doing business as GTBM for one e-ticketing plus software license proprietary software for the police department, 12-month period commencing August 1st, 2019, and ending July 31st, 2020, not to exceed $9,944, non-pro-tun. Number 19, authorize purchase by police department in New Jersey State Contract, A89980/M0483-NASPO, value point computer, from wireless electronics incorporated doing business as wireless communications and electronics for installation services not to exceed $3,000. Number 20, approve purchase by Division of Parks and Shakesfree in New Jersey State Contract, A89851/10003, software license and related services with SHI International Corporation for software, 12-month period commencing July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, not to exceed $2,475.09, non-pro-tun. 21, approve Amendment Resolution R061936, the reason to pay $2,000 is requested by the library with air systems maintenance for temperature control HVAC maintenance and repairs, 12-month period commencing March 16th, 2019, and ending March 15th, 2020. Specification number 5A17P, not to exceed $2,000. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of original contract. 22, authorize purchase by the fire department in New Jersey State Contract, T079/17, Fleet 00819, firefighter protective clothing and equipment, from New Jersey Fire Department do a business as Action Fire Apparatus for air mass, not to exceed $3,321. 23, approve Amendment Resolution R061980, the reason correct business name to Symitra Life Insurance Company, approve renewal of agreement with Symitra Life Insurance Company for stop-loss coverage for Aetna Medical Plan and CVS Caremark Prescription Plan, terms live 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. 24, approve award of contract with Atlantic Tactical Incorporated for work uniforms for the police department in municipal court, 12-month period commencing August 8th, 2019, and ending August 7th, 2020. Specification number 770-19P, not to exceed $32,510.04. 25, approve award of contract with South and Associates, LLC, for in-service training for law enforcement, 12-month period commencing August 8th, 2019, and ending August 7th, 2020. Re-vision specification number 753-19RFP, not to exceed $8,775, fair and open. 26, approve award of contracts for truck and equipment replacement parts with Jesco Incorporated, not to exceed $2,500, with Brown's Hundred International, LLC, doing business as Brown Truck Group, not to exceed $2,000, with Brown's Hundred and Max Sales and Services Incorporated, doing business as Brown Truck Company, not to exceed $2,000, with Campbell Freightliner, LLC, not to exceed $5,000, with North Sea Corporation, not to exceed $12,500. Terms of 12-month period commencing August 17th, 2019, and ending August 16th, 2020. Specification number 76919P. 27, approve Amendment Resolution R051957, reason additional $50,000 to pay outstanding invoices for specialized legal services with Hogan, Wongo, and Miranda, Donson-Dufus, LLC, for 2019 Special Counsel for Tax Appeals, Division of Assessment from $100,000 to $150,000. 28, approve Amendment Resolution R011945, reason additional $10,000 to pay outstanding invoices for specialized legal services with DeFrancesco, Bateman, Hudson, Davis, Lair, and Florham, PC, for 2019 Special Counsel for Tax Appeals and Conflicts, Division of Assessment from $12,500 to $22,500. 29, approve award of contract for furnished and delivered janitorial supplies with Turn Enterprise Incorporated, trading at cotton paper supply company, the amount is $32,973.60, with by the Shine Incorporated, the amount is $12,399.58, with General Chemical and Supply Incorporated, the amount is $17,825.96. Terms 12-month period commencing August 8th, 2019, and ending August 7th, 2020. Specification number 75619P. 30, approve Amendment Resolution R101831, Change Order Number 14, RUBA final, with Joe Man Contract Incorporated, for 2015 Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project Phase 2, specification number 89515A, $108,260.24. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 31, approve Amendment Resolution R051927, Change Order Number 4, with Royal Corporation Incorporated, doing business as Royal Construction Incorporated, for senior citizen center exterior improvements, specification number 90917, the amount $2,150. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 32, approve Amendment Resolution R061929, reason change date to the crane placement, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closures requested by Centimarc Corporation, reason place a crane on Plum Street between French Street and Somerset Street for a final crane, download of roofing debris and equipment from the roof of the Children's Specialized Hospital, Saturday, July 27th, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Non-pro-tun. 33, approve Amendment Resolution R011975, Change Order Number 3, with top line construction corporation, for Joyce Kilmer Avenue roadway improvement, specification number 922-18, Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. 34, approve Amendment Resolution R011963, additional funds for invoice, repay May and June 2019 invoices, with Aetna U.S. Healthcare, Traditional, and POS, term July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, amount $41,465.11. 35, approve renewal of agreement with Cigna Healthcare, HMO, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, non-pro-tun. 36, approve renewal of agreement with Aetna U.S. Healthcare, Traditional, and POS, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, non-pro-tun. 37, approve Amendment Resolution R061932, Change Order Number 5, with Guard State Highway Products, for furnished and delivered 2018 regulatory science, specification number 92518, amount $231.50. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original 38, authorize application and execution of grant agreement for 2020 transportation trust fund program, with New Jersey Department of Transportation for Joyce Kilmer Avenue roadway improvements from Loretta Street to 12th Street, project ID number MA2020, Joyce Kilmer Avenue 00654. 39, authorize application and execution of grant agreement for 2020 transportation trust fund program, with New Jersey Department of Transportation for Lewis Street roadway improvements from French Street to Portland Street, project ID number MA2020, Lewis Street 00661. 40, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow, top line construction refund of police extra duty, $20,000. 41, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow for Howden, Incorporated, refund of police extra duty, $1,835.25. 42, approve Amendment Resolution R061966, to reallocate the encumbrance for police special duty in the amount of $79,000 from the previously approved total contract amount of $865,580 for MSP Construction Corporation for Rutgers Village Water Main Replacement Project Phase 2, specification number 771-19W. 43, approve Amendment Resolution R071911, reason reallocate the encumbrance for police special duty in the amount of $8,000 from the previously approved total contract amount of $77,230, with Ship and Construction Corporation, Chifano Construction Corporation, for the milling of various city streets for the Department of Public Works, specification number 76319P. 44, approve Amendment Resolution R061880, additional amount of $3,946, approve resolution authorizing a contract with TPL New Jersey for conduct, community input, and redesign Peaster and Pittman Parks, amount $3,946. 45, approve Resolution to refund health insurance premium in the amount of $832.02 for Rosemary Duca. 46, approve Resolution to amend 2019 Capital Budget and Capital Improvement Program. 47, approve Amendment Resolution R071928, reason add inflatable to August 11th, 2019, and October 27th, 2019 events, approve request for use of city property, requested by Line of Promise, Joyce Kilmer Park, Mercado Esperanza Market, time 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. 48, resolution authorizing the prequalification of Fitter Pursuits in New Jersey Statute, Association 40A 11-25, for City Hall Roof for Masonary Projects. 49, authorize tax collector to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. We have items for discussion, a discussion of the YALU, the future event, public comments, dates, number. We will call to order.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Escobar. Councilmember Fleming. Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig. Council President Anderson.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings in municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed, the city clerk has been placed on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, Pumnus. Please drive, and politically.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a regime and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for our armed forces here throughout the world, especially those who have given up their life and those who have come back injured. Most of you move the minutes from July 2nd.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes, report of correspondence by the city clerk.
Item 1, a land use ordinance, number 19-24, from North Brunswick Township, amending and supplementing Chapter 205. Item 2, a public notification from Eco Eye Sciences, Inc., regarding the remediation of contaminated sites. Item 3, a public notice from the Township of Franklin regarding elements of the Township master plans. Item 4, a letter from Wick Companies, LLC, regarding the denial of a bond release for 986 Jersey Avenue Project. Item 5, a letter from Matrix New World Engineering regarding a site remediation program for 786 Jersey Avenue. Item 6, a notice from PSDNG regarding gas and electric base rate adjustments. Item 7, a letter from Wood, formerly AMEC Foster Wheeler, regarding environmental investigations at 101 Patterson Street. Item 8, a letter from GEI Consultants regarding a public notification and outreach form for 501 Jersey Avenue. Item 9, a letter from the New Jersey Transit Corporation regarding the fiscal year 2019 request for federal financial assistance. Item 10, a letter from the NJDEP regarding the completed review of the remedial action work plan slash remedial action report for Bristol Myers Swift Company. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicle traffic, Chapter 10, 20, Handicap Parking, Section 10, 20, 10, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicap persons at 376 Livingston Avenue and 46A Chester Circle. Who are the ordinance?
Oh, yes.
Who's the person? If anyone from the public has anything to say on that specific section ordinance, please come to the microphone. Seeing none.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, 12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 12, 10, 12, 40, Schedule 6, stop intersection, delete intersection of Roosevelt Street and Henry Street with stop sign on Roosevelt Street, adding intersection of Roosevelt Street and Henry Street with stop sign on Henry Street. Anybody from the audience would like to give the name and address for the record, please?
Hi, yes, Daniel Morton, 33 Somerset Street. I thank the city for approving this, but I also would like to thank Mr. Witt from the Parking Authority, due to where I know he did take the time to really sit out there with Roosevelt and Henry to see how this was needed. I just wanted to say also thank you for your help, Mr. Witt, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing none?
Who are the ordinance? Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 15, Buildings in Construction, in regards to construction code fees. Anyone from the public seeing none?
Who are the ordinance? Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have ordinances for discussion on first reading. Number one, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 5, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.80, Rent Control.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, the 21st of August, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Egan.
I'm sorry.
I think that's the right date.
No, it's not. It's Wednesday, the 21st, or the 21st. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Okay, we have hearing.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number two, bond ordinance providing for the 2019 General Capital Improvement Program by and in the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $4,885,276, therefore authorizing a debt in the amount of $4,651,000 and requiring a down payment of $234,276.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number three, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water system by and in the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $6,192,755, therefore authorizing the issuance of $6,192,755 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number four, a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the sewer system by and in the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex. State of New Jersey appropriating $2,762,000, therefore authorizing issuance of $2,762,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Council, Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Number five, ordinance to amend and supplement your advice, General Orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, Chapter 12, 20, Parks and Playgrounds, to add Welcome Street Park.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, August 21st, 5:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. We have resolution 1 through 49. If anyone from the public has anything to say on resolutions, please state your names and addresses for the record, and we have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Charles Cradaville, resident of New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick today. And I'll start with number 12, the resolution requesting a referendum. Is that all the council has to do? You don't need to pass an ordinance to put this on the ballot?
Please, Council President, members of the council, the statute provides an option of a resolution board ordinance for this to be placed on the ballot for consideration at the general election. Depending on what council desires to do, after the voters sound in on the question, then potentially it could be an ordinance.
Thank you. You might tell me whose idea this was.
The idea came, was presented by TPI, Trust for Public Land, and they presented the idea to the office in regard, especially to all the work that we've been doing across our park system.
Does anybody know who paid for the phone call last summer on this topic? I'll move on to the next one, 13. Says something about the city needs to hire a patent counsel. Can you tell me what it is that you are going to be patenting?
This is an intellectual property council, special council for that purpose. And as members of council are aware, the City of New Brunswick, with respect to its promotions and tourism, has rolled out a new logo. City of New Brunswick, the heart of New Jersey, and there's a logo with the N.D., I think there's a part there somewhere. With respect to that particular mark, there are certain rights that you would like to claim to it so that others don't try to advance those same rights to it. So this firm specializes in intellectual property matters. We're hiring them to file for us in the U.S. Patent Trademark Office, those particular marks and that particular description, so we can use it without interference going forward. We've used it for a little bit now, and now we're going to go ahead and formalize it.
And is this the first time the city has ever trademarked or patented its logo or a logo?
I think this is the, I can't answer exactly, but I can't remember another time that we hired a special counsel to make it in-house, so I can't answer that.
Well, I don't have much experience with this, but it strikes me as unusual on account of the city being a public entity, and the logo being public property essentially. I don't see the need for this patent counsel, for this application. Let's see, I'll move on to 939 is a grant for Lewis Street improvements. Can you tell me, do these improvements include any improvements at the intersection with French Street? That's obviously one of the worst, most dangerous intersections in our city.
No, they do not. This would be, this project is just outside of the right-of-way, that's part of the county right-of-way. The county and the city are working together on discussing how to redo that intersection, but that's separate from this project.
Okay. And so what can we do to move those discussions along? Because I know that's something that's been brought up before. Is this a matter that sits with a particular body, like the Traffic Commission? Or is there a county entity that we can lobby to make those improvements?
Sure. All of those are, they're started.
Sure. Point me in the right direction, so I can, so people know what I'm talking about when I get there.
Specific to the intersection of French, Lewis, and Sedan Counties, heading up that project, that's through the county engineering department. We've already had our preliminary discussions, discussed possible configurations of the intersection, but that resides primarily with the county.
Thank you. I have two more. I just want to say, I've been coming to these meetings long enough to remember when Rosemary Duca was here, and I just want to say, I hope she's doing well. She's very nice. 948, the, what is this? Why is there this resolution?
I can answer that. I don't know if it's the chair or IP or that's. This is a, this is a resolution that's going to permit us to collect a pool of contractors more likely qualified to perform the type of work that needs to be done to our roof and masonry repairs.
So you'll be able to set a pool?
Pre-qualified contractors.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I want to get Daniel Morton, 33 Somerset Street. On Resolution 33, would you be able to tell me for Joyce Comer Avenue, what's the work you will be doing?
Specific, this again, that was just a follow-up change order to the improvements that were made. In some cases, we had to add a little bit of sidewalk that we didn't necessarily anticipate in plans, or, you know, this is just reflective of the work that was done and the appropriate change orders that were approved by the city.
Thank you. Then also for 38, regards for Joyce Comer being entered from the White Street to Clark Street, what will be getting done?
Well, again, this is an application to the state municipal grant program. The scope of the work would be to upgrade all the crosswalks, similar to what we did on this part of Joyce Comer. Upgrade all the crosswalks so they're ADA compliant. We changed the inlets so that they're eco-friendly. Then it'll be a milling and paving of the roadway and striding traffic.
Okay, so this road will be repaid? Will the road be repaid?
Correct. Just very similar to what occurred on this part of Joyce Comer.
Okay, thank you. Then I want just to comment. Wow, that'll be almost Joyce Comer Avenue to be redone with everything. Hope to see from Sanford Street to Handy Street, once again, the main road that needs part of Joyce Comer to be done. I hope to see that one done next. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the resolutions? Yes, sir.
Greg Sohoth with the Trust for Public Land. I just wanted to comment on Resolution number 12 regarding some questions. I'm not sure who had the idea, but it wouldn't be unusual for the Trust for Public Land to recommend a ballot measure such as that, just because it allows the city to leverage additional, usually state, sometimes county funds for park enhancements and park development and things like that. So that's just my, I don't know if that's exactly the genesis of the idea, but that's just my guess. And regarding as to who paid for the polling or the feasibility study related to the bond, open space bond measure question, generally, again, I'm not sure who paid for that, but it wouldn't be unusual for us to pay for it through a grant from a foundation or somebody like that that supports...
What'd you say?
Us. The Trust for Public Land.
Right.
Yeah, to, that supports our efforts to raise additional conservation and park development and financing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the question.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have an item for discussion by council, the discussion of the last L.A. America, the future of events, to draw attention to maybe somebody would like to revisit it.
My understanding, Mr. Council President, you also wanted to look at what had occurred in your report back from the event entitled the chaotic car club event, which was held on July 21st. I did receive a copy of the memo from police officer Sean Cahill wrote to that event. And I know you wanted to see that event launched, is another reason why it's in jeopardy, as my knowledge.
There's also some question to see whether or not we wanted to reopen that and have L.A.'s reapply for their September event. Is that something you think that they would be interested in doing? Or not, they're not interested?
From my understanding, we received communication from the organization advising they were going to cancel their events that were planned. The one, I believe, was scheduled for the 4th of August, which was this past weekend. I understand was canceled in New Brunswick. And the only future event that the council restricted the right to have food vendors was the one that I believe is scheduled for September 21st, I believe, it's a Saturday. That is the only event. My understanding from email, they sought to cancel that event, I presume because of the council's decision not to allow food vendors.
Yes, sir. Anyone here from L.A.?
Somebody here from L.A.? Can you stand up, please? So who you want to speak with?
Anybody in charge or the attorney?
Hello, everyone?
Please, by the prospect street in Brunswick?
Thank you. So September 21st, is that definitely off, or would you consider reapplying?
We move our events, we canceled events in New Brunswick. Actually, the events are displaced in Highland Park. And of course, the September 20, I mean, September 14th also, we canceled it because our kids need to be fed and need to bring water, so we have to find another space where they can have access to that, so...
Would you be considered to reapply the whole thing for September, like it's 14th, September 14th?
I thought it was, it's 14th. I made the date wrong.
No, no, 14th. It's September 14th.
I can get that wrong a lot.
Which I think is down.
The September 14th is called Orbrutes Festival. Orbrutes Festival.
That's a new one.
I'm sorry?
No, no, that's a new festival, is that right?
That is one in September 14th.
So my question is, is that totally canceled, or would you be interested in reapplying?
Would be interesting in applying. It's up to the kids, but I think if it's under, that we can have access to fed vendors and everything, I think with the new policy that we, L.A.'s acquired in the recent board meeting, I think we can all work together and probably the kids want to use their park, right? You want to use your parks in New Brunswick?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, appreciate if you have any other questions. Questions for the other out there. Okay. Thank you very much.
Could I receive a copy of the policeman in July again?
Yeah, with desire to go a closed session, I would suggest that the closed session will discuss the present condition that's been placed on the September 14th event, and then the discussion council may have those to modify that event in addition to those issues that have been brought up in connection with the chaotic car club event that occurred back in July, and the reason for the closed sessions, organizations represented by council with respect to potential litigation.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Budvar?
Yes?
You can answer from back there. But the car show, that was you acting as a middle person for the car show, right?
Is, as I told you before, we have different groups we collaborate with, and with them working on a health program, we're working and developing other issues. So we accepted to ask for information, but we collaborated with them.
Right.
We want to work with them in the future in health programs.
Right. Did you know that a license required for the 50/50?
What is a 50/50?
Where you sell tickets?
Well, I didn't know that was a ticket selling there.
Okay, and did you know?
So did that happen? I didn't know. I wasn't there all the time.
Okay. So you don't know that you need a license to sell, sell any raffle or 50/50 tickets at any event?
No.
Okay. And how about the license to even sell shirts?
Shirts, merchandise.
Merchandise?
I didn't know, either.
Okay, thank you. All right, cool.
With the intention of a closed session, you can use it at this time.
I just want to say, on closed session, I think again, and I mentioned this the last time, not knowing is not an excuse, and I know that L.A.'s partners, like any other, many organizations with others, but when we put our name there, we are responsible for that event, even if it's not your event. Just because you applied for it, that's your event. So therefore, you need to make sure that you understand the rules, the regulations, you know, if you need license, license for merchandise, license for 50/50. If not, don't put your organization in jeopardy, there is some, by just doing it without, because there was a 50/50 raffle that day. Your name is there because you're the one who applied. The same thing as, but selling t-shirts. You were not even, you said that you were there for a little bit. Anything that happens on that day comes back to you because that's the name that we have here. So you have to make sure that you understand, or if you have any challenges with that, get somebody who could orient you and make sure that you understand what are the rules and what are the regulations when you have an activity in one of our parks or any other place here in the city. And it's just not in the City of New Brunswick, any other city. Everybody has their own rules and regulations that we need to follow, and it's the responsibility of the person, the agency, organization that puts the event together to make sure that they know.
I have a question with that. Yesterday, we have the National Night Out. A person was selling t-shirts. Do you know about that?
Who was selling t-shirts?
I'm asking, do you know about that?
I did not know.
Why?
We are in the same position now, because yesterday they were selling, I mean, they were selling t-shirts, and...
Do you know who was selling?
If you tell me who it was, we know about, you know, whoever asked for permission to run it. This is overall.
What we're saying with this is that everybody should work in the same group.
But you're not talking about the black National Night Out t-shirts, are you?
No, no.
Okay.
It was at what we call Wahaka Park, which is the French Street?
What we morning?
The morning park. You say, I just want to say this, because sometimes I think we want to be so strict with certain people, right? We want to be strict in certain ways, and I think it's many things that we got to learn. I think myself I got to learn, right? Many of us have to learn, and there is things that sometimes are outside what we approve and what we don't approve. And in this case, when I saw this, and you mentioned this, yes, I have to pay more attention, but it's things like some people do, not because they want to do something hard to somebody, it's because maybe they don't know either. And it's so, it's so responsible that you tell them now to call up to them and find out, because the time that I was there, I was approaching police officers. You can ask them, and I said, there is something that I got to take care of, there is something that's going on that is not supposed to be happening. Please let me know if cars are okay. I was there talking with the police officers to make sure that everything was as supposed to be, even I helped move some parts that were not supposed to be in a certain space. So as the situation yesterday, in this event, that is part of the city, that many organizations participate, something like that happens. So we have to just to make sure that everybody understands that, because it means that we try to be, what we say, professional or not pay attention to it. I just want to say...
I just want to say, that's on a city-centered event, anybody could be selling anything on the street. Your event was...
No, it was not on the street. It was in the park.
Well, I know it's in the park, but they didn't make application to the city to have an event and do something there. I'm just saying, anybody could be there and doing that. I understand your point. We're not trying, we're, listen, I'd like to see us try to help your group out, I really do. I'm not, listen, I see you have wonderful children here, we're trying to do the right thing here. What happened was, you had an event, the county food people went to your event, and they found violations at it, and it came into this whole thing. If you think that we are looking to hurt your organization or want this type of thing happening, you're sadly mistaken. We wish when the county went to your event, that it went smooth sailing, there was no problem, like it always should go. We didn't call the county and say, go there, or any of these things. That just happened. Your event got picked at, and they do it all the time, they do spot inspections, and that's what, that's what transpired from this whole thing here. That's why we're here today. And if we can all say that, yeah, there was things that went wrong, yeah, we did things wrong, and yeah, we're going to make it right the next time, at least me, I'm talking for Egan here, I would like to reconsider, because I don't want your kids to go without the war and all the stuff. Yeah, people are in there going, oh my God, the guy's got a heart, I can't believe this guy. No, but it's true. I really, I felt bad after the last meeting, but I still think that you have to admit that your side, your organization, you had some things wrong, and you got caught by the county vet, let me speak, and that's what happened, and that's why we're here today. So let's all admit that it was, and let's move forward with the new things that were going to happen in place. Let's move forward with doing the event the right way, having the food, all with the right certificates and permits, that all needed to be gone. That way, when you get another spot inspection, you're going to say, wow, this organization did great, it's all good. I want, I want you to have the events. I don't want to hold anybody back, especially when you bring the kids here, it makes it really hard, I have to say, I have children of my own. So that's my take on it. That's me talking, I think.
And that's what I'm trying to tell you, that you need, you know, when I said I'd take, you put in your organization, the good work that you do, in jeopardy for not, you know, for no finding information and making sure that everything is going the right way. That's what I'm saying. I don't know, it's not an excuse, and to me, it's not an excuse. If I'm going to do an event, I need to make sure that I know everything that is, that is related to that event. If I'm putting my name on an event, even if I'm the organizer of the event, I'm going to make sure that those people are doing everything the way it should be done, because then I will be putting myself in jeopardy and my organization in jeopardy. That's all I'm saying, that moving forward, the I don't know is not enough, you know, there is, things need to be followed like everybody does follows. And if anybody do not follow, you know about it, let us know, because this is not a, this against the other one. This is uniform, whoever does, we have done it before, whoever doesn't do the right thing is going to have consequences for it too.
Mr. Budvar, you indicated that you had gone to a seminar or something for a certificate to go over those rules and regulations for events or something?
Oh, yeah, we have already arranged with the health department, the Midlises County Health Department, to attend the breath of going, sending all the vendors and everybody to make the training on service.
Okay, so basically, they didn't cover, basically, vendors who need license or 50/50 raffles, I want to be able to tell them to make sure.
I don't understand.
They just do food, right?
Oh, no, 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 no. I know, for example, I know, that's why I don't do those things, the 50/50 things, or the selling t-shirts, or stuff like that, we don't do that. Our L.A.'s don't know that stuff. But what I'm saying is that, food, what I'm saying is, again, I understand, Escobar, I understand the responsibility, we try our best to follow what we can. What I'm telling you is that sometimes certain people do things that maybe because they don't know. That's what I try to cooperate with whoever is there to guide and tell me. I didn't find out right now. I didn't find out when I was speaking with the police officer, there were two police officers there. Then when I spoke with them three times, they never told me that something was going on. If I knew, I would rather stop them, because it's something that I don't allow them to do. I have to ask for permission. So I know that for many years ago, that's why I don't do that. So what I'm saying is that sometimes certain people do things, even if without your control, even though you tell them not to do it, and that's what we have to cooperate. That's what I'm saying. If, if the next thing, something happens, also I want the police officer to tell me, because I'm there. The other thing, make sure that if the event says that it's at 6 o'clock, and they tell you, the police is saying at 5:45, we need to announce that this is done, that is followed, not waiting 45 minutes later, an hour later to end the event. If you date them to 6, 6 o'clock, it should be shut down, or at 6:45, or at 7.
The one thing is actually before that, but the people, they laughed hard that left the space, because they were there, they were so happy, they stayed there longer, and the police officers wanted to leave everybody at that time, but there was all the cars, from all the people that were using the park, using the same spot. So the event was finished before 6 o'clock, well, actually, a few minutes before 6 o'clock, but cars were there, all people was there, and that's something that I cannot also tell people, leave if they already used the same spot that we used. spot that we used.
Just trying to remind and tell them like, listen, we're only allowed here at six o'clock, so figure pack up your things, I wanna be able to use the event later on and things like that and then so the, the city like that or something like that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I can make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss the Laslo's situation.
Second.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President, Sapporo Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, we'll be right back.
We'll need a motion to come back.
Motion to come back into, uh...
Motion.
Second.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President, Sapporo Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.
Before Mr. Anderson, um, you go into the discussion, continue the discussion, I should say. Just for the record, the minutes of the closing session, we'll be able to counsel to discuss, um, the potential for having, um, Laslo's continual events in the city of New Brunswick, subject to certain terms and conditions. Uh, also discuss the, uh, the events that took place at the Chaotic Club event, um, was advised by council and, um, has now come back for their decision relative to future action. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the city council has decided to take up the resolution at the August...
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, uh, meeting, uh, to basically start over and to have Laslo reapply if they still want to September fourteenth. Uh, obviously, there'll be some, uh, things that even were proposed by the vendor policy that'll be in there, uh, along with a couple of other things, nothing tremendous or anything else like that that I, I don't think you'd, you'd find terribly wrong, especially since we already got imposed food vendor policy with some of those things from Las, uh, Laslo's. Uh, so we should have a resolution of all types and ready to go and hopefully it would be approved, uh, assuming that's the way the council wants to vote on August twenty-first and that would give you plenty of time, uh, to take care of everything. So that's the way we're going. I think I got it there.
And just one thing too, the guidelines that we're looking to put in place are going to be put in place for everybody, not just, there're not gonna be restrictions on your vendor only, there're gonna be new guidelines for these types of events so that we can, hopefully, these, we don't have these problems again. So just so you know that.
Okay. Anybody else on that? Okay. Uh, we now have, uh, public comments. Again, please give your name and address, you have up to five minutes, one time, up only.
Can I say something real quick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna acknowledge, eh, the council, but also specifically, um, Councilman Kevin Egan, for, um, taking up on, eh, with the council to bring forth, eh, this issue again to discuss it more at length. Eh, sometimes he gets a bad rap and, uh, he was the one who spearheaded this, um, this movement was to talk again and see if what would be the best for everybody involved, especially when you have fixed our community. Thank you.
Hi, Daniel Moore, once again, I would like to ask the city, please, if I can have a little more time, I do have a story and I would like to share, share from my heart, please, it really means a lot if I can ask you for the time to really speak tonight, believe me, like I said...
Not long ago.
Well, ten, give me ten minutes, but like I said, I said, I, I said, I wasn't even coming to the meeting, but like I said, for something that really means something to me, like I said, to come here and severe pain, oh, oh yes, believe me. But I, I, but first, I would just like to thank, what, PSE and D and contractors for the wonderful work they've done to New Brunswick by repainting the roads, all the line spread because I have to say, wow, a great job they did, I have no, long as I live in New Brunswick, you've never seen this many roads paved so clean with safety, with lines and all, I would just say, wow, what a great job they have redone New Brunswick.
Well, I wanna make sure too that Mr. Valenti and his crew also get, uh, credit for that, been working very closely with other services and other working folks.
Just for the, they're not done yet, they still have more to go.
Yes, I, 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 I do, I do know that. And then like I said, wow, thank you, Jesus, due to where I, I hear, like I said, wow, Livingston Avenue hasn't been approved for the six million dollars, yes, I do understand, yes, it's gonna take time until twenty, two thousand twenty, but like I said, wow, just glad it's been approved, that something will finally be done for Livingston Avenue to make it safe to cross again. And now, like I said, some things, like I said, hurt, hurtful, but like I said, means a lot. Mister, I've been practicing on your name, Mister Tom Valenti, would you please tell me the engineer's name that you were with Monday, Monday riding with in the, in the car? I, I don't seem to remember his name. When we, when, when, when we were at, at the store on Commercial Avenue.
Oh, I was, I was in the car with Rich Wood, my inspector. He's not an engineer, he's an inspector for the engineering department.
So, so is he, is he your boss, does he, does he work with you? Or, 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 or what?
Rich Wood is, is my employee, I'm his boss.
Oh, okay, thank you, and I will get, I will get back to, to the reason why I asked who this gentleman is because like I said, after reading my story, wow, I tell you, wow, so much hate coming from, oh yes, and when I say hate, make my speech, I mean hate. But I, 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 and I, and I will say, what, I'd just like to read the statement, I would love to thank Tormel Pittman, not knowing I hadn't been on Facebook in so, so long, but I will thank him from my heart, the wonderful speech that he did write on Facebook about my effort in helping New Brunswick making it safer. Like I said, some people, due to where you have hateful workers that take it against me, like I'm really doing something wrong. Oh, oh yes, and like I said, if I could just read, read, read this story. Tormel Pittman, July twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, seven, six, fifteen AM, before I start my morning run, I would just like to give a heartfelt apology to Daniel Moore on behalf of New Brunswick. This woman has been canvassing the city over decades, taking pictures, pointing out any safety hazard dangers for our children, elders and community residents, even while having knee issues, but like I said, it's my back and plenty more. And while the city continues to create public positions, they never once considered offering her position to do what she's already been doing for free. As a Black, as a Black man, I want you to simply, because you don't beat to a certain drum with your consistent hard work and dedication for all these years, if not unnoticed, shame on the brother, like I said, I did not accent the, but wow, please, like I said, with two of your hateful workers, wow, please tell me, what is it wrong that I do when helping people, taking the time to make New Brunswick safe? And like I said, how some of, two of, the two of them, how they really treat me, like what am I doing wrong? What do I, do I make them have to do more paper, paperwork to, to, to really make it? Because wow, you can't say what I do for New Brunswick, what? It doesn't prove the solution of stopping someone getting hate. And the reason why I'm saying this, wow, if, I can't remember the inspector's name, but yes, for him to actually tell me, wow, question me, like I said, wow, I swear my grandma, I'm brave, what, the Lord may strike me down now, what, for him to even question me, sure, I may look like an athlete, but what, for him to say, oh, why can't you be a crossing guard? What, are you one of them who just wants to collect welfare and, and waste our taxpayers' money? Then wow, like I said, the way I have to suffer, what, by getting in judgment, what are you trying to say that I'm taking? And like I told him, wow, how could you even make a comment due to where you were the inspector of my, of my case? And like I said, I do not get it, and like I told him, what? That's where PSE and D and Brighton Pace might benefit, but like I said, wow, when I say hatred and like I said, some, some of them, and like I said, even Mister Tom Valenti, how, the way he goes after me, but wow, all he says, oh, come on, that's not true, my wife is in a wheelchair, I love to help out. Wow, like I said, what, I went to the office on the twenty-second of July. Well, just to present some, ask for some help, due to where I told you I had just thanked you for, for, thanking the county for redoing Alexandria Street, due, due to where, what, I went to the office, what, then I, then inspector, what? Due to where he's so nasty to me, he wouldn't even come to me, oh, please, can I get your help, please? How many times, what, wouldn't even get out of his chair and come towards me and help me? Do you find that somebody who really cares about their township? No. Oh no, just because with this county, I said, okay, I don't know how to contact the county, this been, can you please, but wow, I see, due to where they had just made a mistake and repainted the lines, but the fine, like I said, what if I'm a witness of something danger happening? Yes, I will speak up because like I said, I know what it's like to be a victim and money doesn't take away pain, but the way he treats, treated me in the office, oh, like, wow, just get out, get out of here, get out of here. And wow, you talk about a person, due to where, sure, someone who really cares, what, I came and offered the pictures, pictures to Mister Jones, what did he say, what did he say? Wow, okay, took, took a look at him, wow, okay, sure, maybe county or whatever, what, okay, here, give me time. Like I said, sure, I know things take time, but wow, do you call that people, he's a person who, who I said really cares about something. I wasn't expecting it to be done the next day, but sure, it was, that was where, sure, like I said, what, it was done, due to where, like I said, it was very dangerous, how, sure, they came up and said, what, the workers told me, oh, would you please prevent this? And what, I came back here on you and showed Mister Jones, what, what a good job, believe me, that's what I call a person who really cares about their township. And then like I said, what, we're saying why Mister Valenti, like I said, we're traffic meetings should be recorded. Wow, how, just where he told Mister, Mister Charlie here, wow, when he asked him, what, what, about French, French Street and, uh, Lewis? What, that was when we were having the traffic, traffic meeting, what, la last week? What, oh, I just presented him, what, with the pictures of an accident, like I said, if I'm a witness to something, which I am a witness to a lot of things, I can't say why, what, could the Lord know, I will speak up and make it safe for our neighborhood? What, a big car accident right on the corner there, that was the same day as the twenty-second when I was doing the pictures for that? What, what does he tell me? First thing, oh, it won't be done tomorrow, what, did he, did, did, did he, well, like I said, how he really treats me, like, wow, what am I doing harm just because I'm presenting something to try to make it safe for the area? Wow, everything, what, I asked, what, oh, would you please, what? Uh, with the sign with the dears, oh no, it's no accident, but, but please, no, we don't have to do this, how, like I said, how so much hatred between him and that inspector, wow. What, even the store Monday, what, we go, go in there, what, he saw, saw me, what, didn't wanna come in there, what, the inspector comes in there, what? Looking at me like angry, like, please tell me, what am I doing wrong to be really treated like, like this? To save someone else? And like I said, what, I questioned about Livingston Avenue, what, like I said, I, I learned that, that to have patience to do things. And what, I asked about middle school and Livingston Avenue being done with the flashers, what, it's been over a year and a half, I just asked him, when will it be done? Oh, whenever we get some money, I'll think about taking care of it. Like I said, wow, we can talk well, nice to anyone else, like, like I said, the same thing, please, what is it with them that, please, just tell me, what is it that I'm doing wrong to make someone sure it's safe? What, like I said, wow, making them have extra paperwork, wow, they don't have to go out and do the work? And the comments that I'm getting, like I said, and I thank all the residents who responded to Mister Tormel Pittman, respond to stories that were over five hundred, where, yes, thank you for appreciating, telling me about my hard work, what, you've never heard me really ask you for anything, not even a job or anything, I do it out of the goodness of my heart, and like I said, what, I know what it's like to be a victim, and like I said, what, for him to really say, like, I'm thinking, what I have to go through? For him to really say that, I tell you, if I had a choice now, like, to hit the jackpot for millions of dollars or to have a, have a wand? Believe me, I would choose to have a wand, and like I said, maybe I shouldn't say, but believe me, I will, I would choose, the Lord passed it to him to really see what I go through every time, whether I look like, wow, I'm in good shape or whatever, due to where all I do is walk, walk, and due to my physical therapy, President, you do probably walk and walk here in shade. But wow, for him to really say that, like I, well, well, like I said, believe me...
I appreciate it, and I can tell you that certainly I, and I'm sure members of the council before, I've indicated before, thank you for your concern for New Brunswick, your pictures and everything, we certainly take it in heart, I'm sure everybody else does, maybe, maybe the way they're communicating.
Well, believe me, the inspector, Mister Valenti, like I said, the way they treat me, no, 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 it's not, and like I said, it's at the point that, like I said, it really hurts. Like I said, what am I doing wrong?
Well, I don't think there's anything you're doing wrong, if there is, we'll...
For, for, like I said, the way they really comment about me, what?
You said that, yes, right, okay. Uh, we'll take it, let everybody have a second.
Please, please, thank, thank you, but like I said, the same thing, what, where, how, like I said, please, maybe take the traffic meeting, because half the time that I do ask, what, if Mister, Mister Jones to really request, make sure the request is putting for something to be done. Thank you, I'm sorry, I won't be able to listen to anyone's conversation tonight, due to where normally I would stay, but I'm in pain right now and I have to go, but thank you.
You're better. Anybody else? Good evening.
Sure. Good evening.
Speak a little bit.
Oh, sorry, my bad. I'm Curtis Cunnahan, uh, I live at two seventy-two Hamilton Street. Um, and I, I have two, two things. Um, the first, I was wondering about, uh, one of the ordinances, the, uh, the one about rent control. Um, so I...
And that's the first of your second reading here?
I'm number one, um, the F, um...
Okay, we can't talk about it, but, uh, if you have some ideas or something that, uh, we can answer or something like that, we would, but we don't have it all, we're still discussing it. But we have a...
Oh, could you, could you, oh, could you explain, uh, what, what exactly is going on and why, why you can't talk about it? I just, I'm a little confused because, uh, it's on here and it's open to the public, but I, I don't understand, is it, is it an amendment or a supplement or, or you take these in or you, are you taking these out or putting these in? Yeah, the rent control.
It just raises the rental registration fee and the, the, that's all it does.
Looking into changing the, the fees.
Oh, the fee regarding what?
Rent, figuring rental property...
The landlord fee, so.
Oh, okay.
The landlord fee. And the reason why we can't talk about it, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm first reading, I'll get to the statute, you'd not like to talk about it, uh, in public until the following meeting.
Oh, okay.
Not exactly right. Go ahead, understand what you're saying.
That's the idea, so we're not even sure, we're gonna bring it up at the next council meeting or change the, the fees or the dollar amounts or things like that, that's the idea they...
Oh, okay, okay, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Um, are you guys considering any other changes to the control?
I'm sure every day they're considering.
Okay. Well, I, I ask because I, I, you know, as a resident, um, I noticed some issues in my community, um, with leases and that leases are often not communicated to people in languages and, uh, in the language that they would prefer. And so I was hoping like, uh, that maybe we could have a discussion about, you know, maybe putting languages in, uh, yeah.
We have a rent control board, that would be the person and they make recommendations off of us.
Okay, as a community member, can we?
Absolutely.
Well, that's my recommendation. And I, I just think it would be, uh, it would often, you know, improve our community a lot if we, you know, uh, consider, you know, offering leases in the language that the person who's negotiating the contract is most comfortable speaking in. And then also, uh, like eviction notices as well, sometimes they're coming in a language that the person who's receiving the eviction is not comfortable with. And so they, they don't understand the terms of the eviction and sometimes these evictions are wrong and unjust. And it's much more difficult, obviously, to find an eviction notice if, you know, you don't even, you know, if you don't have access to that, you know, you under...
Right, yeah, and that was a rent control board, something...
Escobar, you did, you did work on this.
Yeah, and there's, there's still some work to be done, some organizations right now, I'm thinking together, eh, being to ready for, and it's, they're working very closely with Maria Cody from, eh, the city, eh, in terms of that, eh, to ensure that tenants get the information that they need, eh, we got, eh, the rights, the same thing as member. I don't think they are addressing yet the lease to be translated because that's a little bit difficult, sounds good.
Yeah.
little bit difficult, sounds good, in theory, but it's a little bit complicated, in other, you know, the matter, so, but they're looking at all the, all the ways that they can continue, as they have been doing so far, and the organizations are coming in, there's initiatives out there, health boards that are working in the community, inspecting homes for other things, and they have noticed also some of the tenants who have some challenges, so they're working, you know, the organization, the hospital, they're working together to bring forth all of that, maybe try to get some grants to have somebody who will help these tenants, a little bit more intentional, just for that, so there's things going on that are working, that they in the works.
Is there someone that you would recommend me particularly, as it concerns citizens and?
I would suggest for you to talk to Maria Cody, she's in rent control, and she knows all some space, so she's pretty good. I haven't seen her at school, so, no. So she has, and she's very involved in the community organizations who are doing this work, and she has been very informative and helpful.
So, so I can ask Marie Code what is to, to bring this forward to you guys, and then you would be able to consider?
Well, even to the organizations, when they're working with it in the community, because they're working in the community, what would be the best way to tackle that situation, especially when I, like I said, leases in another language is a little bit more complicated than it seems, so.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I've been working with Lozos, and I, and I just wanted to thank Egan for, you know, bringing it back into consideration, and I, I hope you guys really do move forward to have a continued relationship with Lozos, and it is Lozos, not Lozmos, yeah, I guess there was a typo, but thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks.
Querétanos by Katniss Bulwark, it was a good one. As you guys know, it was a hatred, massacre that happens in Texas, in Paso, Texas, Dehaz, and I was just wondering, all this hatred that is coming across the country and all this happening in all the United States, I was wondering, what is that the city is doing or planning to do, what is this council doing, and taking in consideration that, you know, it was an attack to the Mexican community, what is that you guys are doing to protect the Mexican community from New Brunswick?
Well, we certainly have our police force, and we have a lot of community groups out there that-
We have, we have two policees, actually, the regular police and the local police.
Yes, and we're working, we always work with them, we also work with our community.
But is any, any, anything in concrete that you guys are thinking about?
There are some things, we don't want to put everything out there, because some things that the perpetrator knows about it, you know, that's not good.
But I would like to see and recommend to the council, if there's any way that you guys can create a, find like a plan or something with the community, not just having the police there, it's not, I don't think it's a, it's a solution. So if you guys can please think about it.
But it's also the police in coordination with a lot of our community groups, especially with Hispanics.
But it's nothing in concrete, right?
They have some things that are generally concrete, but there are also some things that are specific, that will not be made part of the general policy.
I'm just trying to ask you this raised that question, I'm just trying to know what it is that-
I would like to know what-
You're looking in response to what happened in El Paso, or you're looking in response to, you know, overall?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking in response on how the city is willing to protect the Mexican community and the immigrant community in general, because of the hatred that is happening across the country, and the violence that is happening across the country. I think all cities and all towns and all states are working constantly to protect our community, and consider that in New Brunswick, the majority is the Mexican community, I'm wondering, is there any concrete steps that the city is willing to do or willing to make to protect the Mexican community and the immigrant community in general?
Yeah, in general, I could tell you, I'm not aware of anything related to El Paso, I think that that is, what is happening in this country overall, it is shameful, I think that the rhetoric that is coming from the top is creating, creating more, or actually not creating more, is bringing out the real, true feelings of some people in this country in terms of showing off their bigotry and racism towards others, so they have this opportunity to, it's more, it's more acceptable, because people tend to think that because they want the top, and this with that, that it's okay with everything else. But nonetheless, in terms of the city, in the past, what we have done, I think that the city of New Brunswick is a welcoming city, we have, the city has been very good to everybody, all communities, especially the Latino community, especially New Brunswick, in terms of cooperation, when there's any issues with immigration, we have been the forefront, any of the issues that the Latino community in general have had, I think the city has been very responsive to it, in a collaborative, partnership way, we have, you know, we're together with different sectors of the community, not just that, that bring forth residents and the community, in, in the sense of related to this event, I, kind of tell me about that, because I'm not aware of any, but nonetheless, if there is something that as a community you feel that it needs to be done, I don't know how much can we protect, because there's crazy people out there, that as much as you can protect, but just as, as somebody from the Latino community, I tell you that the city is very responsive to our needs, is trying and learning, you know, every day, and if there's anything in particular that any residents feel that it needs to be done, they just have to bring it forward, either by calling in the merger's office, they have a member person over there that are able to take you calls, and any concerns that the citizens and the residents might have.
I understand, so, the point is, I think that it has to be, it has to be some way how we can address white supremacy and how this is affecting our local community. I think it's protecting, by, by protecting, it's not just having a police department, and actually, two police departments, that some of, some of it has collaborated with immigration and to deport and detain our communities. So I don't think, I think it's also lack of trust, but I think it's important for, for the council to, to come out with a plan, that it's not just we have a two police departments, but I, we would like to work with you as well, and, and anything that, that I can, I can bring more concrete steps, that would be, that would be good.
Absolutely, so, in, in terms of the police department, the police department have not cooperated with immigration on this, it's something that, there are some, because they need to be, because of safety in the perimeter of where something is happening, but in terms of the police inside with immigration, I, not in here, so.
Now, we have, we have a lot-
Unless it's a crime, you know, looking for criminal, and it is-
No, we have a lot of cases of not criminal, and if we discuss operate with that-
No, the police, not here, not, that I correct?
Yes, it is, we can, we can talk about it.
Yeah, after I show you, you know, I don't-
All right, thanks.
Unless it's a specific, again, a specific case that it needs, you know, that you have, but not for, that's not the case, but, well, I was going to talk to you about it.
All right, great, thank you so much for answering, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jaime Lopez, I'm coming from Princeton, and I'm a volunteer with Lozos. I just wanted to first, before I start speaking, thanks to y'all for working with Lozos, you know, helping these sorts of events that they're holding go forward, they, you know, mean a lot to me, you know, even though I'm not from New Brunswick, you know, means a lot to me and other Latino folks outside of New Brunswick, for them to have these events for the community side and another organization to do its work. The other thing I wanted to say was just to reinforce what Carissa was talking about, about this issue of folks being able to understand leases and other documents related to the tenancy, I, I realize, you know, as, as has been said, it, you know, would be a complicated thing, but it is, you know, I think it would be a really significant improvement of, of quality of life, because, you know, just, we have tenancy clinics every Monday to help tenants that are having issues with their landlords or stuff like that, and just this Monday, we had another issue, where this issue of the language barrier in these documents came up, and, you know, a person was essentially being swindled and, you know, by their landlord based on, you know, things that were inserted into the lease that they, you know, couldn't understand, because it wasn't provided in a language they could understand. So I just really wanted to emphasize again, how important and, you know, how, you know, potentially beneficial this would be to folks, they're trying to, you know, just live their lives, and so, it's like-
Hi, my name is Sadiq, I've been here a couple meetings before, but again, I'm a graduate student at Rutgers here, I was an undergrad here, I'm also with the San Francisco DSA, and I just wanted to first echo what Carissa and Jaime have to say about just again, leases issue, we're still gonna be working on it, hopefully going forward, we could also like sort of maybe sit down with you guys and talk more about some of the ideas we've had, or learn more from what you guys have sort of, you know, learned from the community, having represented them, so, because we just feel like it's a very, very simple issue of justice and language justice, I mean, it's really, getting the information that they need is one thing, but I think it just helps, obviously, a great deal, if you're able to like literally understand what's being said, said to you about your housing situation, and also eviction and stuff, because, but again, just want to reiterate, we have folks who get letters where they're obviously really scared after getting those letters, right? They're not really sure what it said, I mean, they understand eviction, but they just don't read everything, because they can't sometimes, but also, there's just a lot of this hodgepodge of like legalese and stuff like that, so, we want to make things clear for them, because, you know, for a New Brunner to keep, you know, doing what he's doing and keep growing, I think it's helpful to still, you know, at least, in that case, not also say discard some people, because they just can't understand literally the document they need, or state inside where they are, so we can just work on it together or something like that. The second thing, kind of wants to, point of clarification, I guess, is the rent ordinance again, I think you mentioned to Carissa, it's something to do with raising fees on landlords when they're trying to rent property, is that what it is, kind of technically?
Registration.
No, registration, okay.
So, so this would be discussed then by the next city council?
After the next meeting.
Okay, so is there, so technically, this would be posted before that online for everyone to read, or would we have to like wait till now to get it, or, or is there a way to get it before?
Proposal, everything's-
It'll be advertised in New Street, but it'll be posted on the bulletin board downstairs outside, made available to the public tomorrow.
Okay, oh, perfect, okay, that's fair, and that's just the only other question I have, about just reading it and understanding what this is. And then just going forward, again, just Lozos, I know it seems like you guys discussed and figured out a sort of plan going forward, or you guys will, just want to reiterate again, as someone who volunteered at Lozos and learns a great deal about the community through Lozos, Lozos is a great, great organization, they do a lot of great work, I know sometimes they might, like, I guess people are saying like, oh, they have, something is missing in this thing, but it's a lot to do, they do a lot of great things. I think some of the, some of the, maybe frustration that I feel is the fact that it seems like, sometimes it feels like people are treating Lozos as if they have, they are like some sort of organization that doesn't help people, like they help people and maybe things don't go as planned, but that's their goal, they do a lot of great things for the community, so hopefully going forward, that's just kept in mind, but talking about how to improve the relationship with the city and Lozos, because I really feel like it would be a shame if more organizations like Lozos did not exist in the city. Again, as someone who's grown up in the area, Lozos has been like really important to me, and really important to the community, and obviously, as you can tell, like all the kids and families here, so just want to reiterate that, that they shouldn't be investigated in a, in a kind of manner, I guess. And also, just wanted to also add, I think, is there some, did you guys follow up on the issue with the, the police officer who was recorded saying something about so-called like, quote unquote illegals or something like that? I think Ellen Witt was the one raising that issue, did anyone follow up with that, or get in touch with that, you know, with that officer or anything like that?
I have no idea, that's what-
It was investigated by Internal Affairs, this was contacted, she knows the outcome.
Okay, all right, so I'll just follow up, excuse me, I'll just follow up with her. But yeah, just going forward, like issues like that, I feel can often actually go against the narrative of like saying it's a hospitable place, but you have officers and people in power who might always kind of use personally, it can definitely come out in their work, maybe not as extreme as saying doing something very extreme, but it can just come out as being apathetic towards someone's needs, so I think it's maybe a little much to say it's like this community is as safe as it should be for all its residents. Yeah, so just going forward, and me just figuring out how to not have those kind of officers patrolling areas where they might view people as being like some sort of lesser and humanizing, sort of, because as a person of color, it is scary to think that someone could be thinking of me or thinking of someone else as being either quote unquote illegal or being something that's not American, and that could lead to so many other kinds of thoughts and, and sort of situation where you, you know, as a resident then, or as a person in the area, I wouldn't then, I wouldn't expect them to protect me, it'd be more also as hostility and stuff created.
Exactly, we hope that they have freedom to do to be, which is important also.
Right, but I, I just, I'm just clarifying, the point is like, there is a, I think there is an issue though, that seems like to be cropping up, especially, but also the issue that's came up now with the investigator or the inspector who called a resident, you know, someone who comes here very regularly, and derogatory, but it's like, you know, going forward, thinking about that, sort of, it's one side.
Yeah.
Sorry, so, yeah, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Egan, once again, Charles Crasville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Just start by saying, I hope the council's gonna investigate the allegations Ms. Moore brought to this microphone with the same enthusiasm that investigated Lozos, I stand with Lozos, I stand with Ms. Moore, and just before we go any further, can you please ask your attorney, is there any statute in the state of New Jersey that prevents this council from discussing any ordinance before, during, or after the first reading?
There is no statute, regulation that prohibits. This council has had a policy and practice for many, many, many years of not discussing their positions on ordinances that are introduced on first reading. The reason for that, Mr. Crasville, is that the council should have an opportunity, just like the public does, to weigh the different options that are available, that are presented in a ordinance that is on for first reading. So if they were to discuss their particular opinions about an ordinance that's introduced the first time on that very night, I don't think it would be fair to them, should they change their opinion based upon their research or their review of the matter two weeks later and say something or vote in a different way. So that's been the policy and the practice of this particular council. Certainly, there's no prohibition for someone to stand up in the public session and say whatever they want about an ordinance that's on for first reading.
So it would be wrong to say there's a state statute in prevention from discussing?
I don't think we ever said that.
I said it before, I said it was wrong.
Okay, okay, so please, please don't give excuses that are not-
And I just specifically said, we can give you the idea behind it.
Exactly, the question wasn't, it was factual, hey, what you just passed, what's this about?
And we did-
No, 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 I, I just think, I don't like being misled, I don't like being told that we can't discuss this because of statute, and people, people fall for it, people fall for it.
I did not say that, so.
I said, I said, right. And you were, and the council should not, you should discuss ordinances on first reading, because the public should know what you're passing.
Well, we're saying that, you're right.
So, windy day today, should we be concerned at all about construction cranes collapsing and crushing buildings?
No.
Okay, is it true that there's a requirement in the city codes for cranes of a certain size to be registered, to be applied, there's an application fee, an application file?
I believe that's true, Mr. Relenty?
That's correct.
Okay, and has the council taken it upon themselves to look at the application for the crane that collapsed and crushed two, two buildings in our city?
No, we investigated, we've got a lot of information about it and everything like that.
Okay, because you looked at the application for the food vendors in Senko de Mayo, did you look at the application for the crane, was one filed even? Was, were the statements on it accurate?
I believe we had a resolution, we have for cranes, we usually have resolutions for cranes.
Not in this case, I believe this was not approved by the council, I believe it's supposed to be approved by the city engineer, which we don't have one right now, correct?
Incorrect, I believe we have an acting engineer, not a certain one.
There's an interim engineer, Kathy Morset.
Okay, and so, has anyone looked at the application to see if it was accurate, or even filed at all?
I have.
And?
Everything is so worth it, in short.
Except the crane collapsed.
Well, crane collapse, this is true, that nothing to do with the application or any of your-
The respective management and director also was pegging up the nature.
The crane collapse was one of, an unusual circumstance, one that happened because of active nature, it was checked out by OSHA, came on the scene and didn't find anything wrong with the way the crane operators were operating that day, the rule of putting the crane down is based on the weather report, which didn't indicate any type of severe weather coming.
And that's not just one weather report, correct?
That's, that's, yes, and, and so, there was no violations by the company, it was just a bad situation.
Okay, since this was an active nature, I have to ask, does every member of the city council believe in climate change?
I do.
Yeah?
I think yes.
Okay.
I think we all do.
It's good, good.
You can tell by your hair tonight, when you came in, you were going to do some climate change.
Don't even. So my next question is regarding an employee of the mayor's office, Pilar Bellis Cona Barber, is running for Middlesex County Freeholder, if she wins, will she keep her job at City Hall?
I guess not, if it was the mayor.
Who would be the best person to answer that question, then?
Mayor.
Okay, where's the mayor tonight?
I had dinner, I don't keep it, right?
Okay, does the mayor have, does the mayor have an email address I can reach him at, or a phone number I can reach him at?
I don't know. I'm the information director.
Did you guys have coffee together?
We used to, yeah, well, I think it's a long story, you guys know about it, but, but listen, at the end of the day, like, this is a fair question, I tried to ask Clary last night, and she, she, you know, fled, she, she didn't have an answer.
Freeholders have other jobs also, I mean, you can-
I know, I want to know if she's gonna keep this one in, in City Hall.
That'll be up to her and the mayor.
Okay, well, I think she was afraid I was gonna ask her about her resume, that's why she wouldn't talk to me, but I, I have a document I'd like to put in the record, but first I have five copies for you guys.
Thank you.
So at the, at the last meeting, I, you know, I asked about how many shootings there have been, and I wanted to, to get a gauge on that, I've learned the department doesn't, the police department doesn't keep track of that. Learned the department doesn't, the police department doesn't keep track of that. And so I was told I had to file an Oprah request, and this is the response I got to my Oprah request. It's both incomplete, insufficient, and heavily redacted here. But I just want to, you know, spell out the patterns for you here. As far as, I've been able to identify between this and the items that were left out, yeah, eight different gun crimes this year. February 10th, on Reed Street, low-income neighborhood, shots were fired. No press release issued, no crime alert issued. February 20th, over near Rutgers, there was an armed robbery. That got a crime alert. March 19th, on the other side of town, near the other Rutgers campus, shots fired, Illinois and a nickel. That got a...
Your point, Mr. Cradville, you want to get to that?
Crime alert.
If your time is left, you want to get to the point. Do you have any idea?
Yeah. So, I mean, my point is that when things happen in my neighborhood, they're kept quiet. When things happen near Rutgers, there are often publicity. There's press releases issued, and crime alerts issued by Rutgers. And I want to know why my neighborhood doesn't get the same level of transparency from this police department.
On the level, I guess, if they think they can do it, or anything else, Captain Miller?
Okay. And is there any reason that one of the murders and three of the shootings, three shootings, all in July, are missing from this document? Can I ask who prepared this document?
I don't know. I'm sure somebody's done. It's a department.
It's provided to me from the city clerk's office with a cut letter from Captain Miller. Can I ask who actually prepared it? Because this is...
Aggravated.
You prepared it, okay. And can Captain Miller tell me why the murder that occurred on April 4th is not listed in this? That was not an aggravated assault? Is it stabbing, fatal?
A murder has a separate statute than aggravated assault.
So there was no charge of aggravated assault in that case?
Different statute.
I'd have to look up anything. I don't know. What about the three shootings last month? July 4th, Drew Mendelabane. July 13th, Senior Lykov. July 25th, Seaman Drift. None of them are in here either. How could I possibly get a tally of how many shootings have been in the city?